I'll call to order this May 10th, 2022 Hybrid Town Council Meeting. If everyone could please rise with allegiance, followed by.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, affirmations, presentations, make one. Affirmation recognizing Angela Lubo for the 2022 Nightingale Excellence in Nursing. This was a new request from Lubo that was sent in.
Hold off on that until Councilor Lubo is here? And I just thought he might want to be here when that's presented.
I would motion to table 4.1. Back to it at a later point.
So.
A second, a second.
Is that the rear hybrid? We'll do roll call votes. Councilman Utechak?
Aye.
Murray, Councilor Con. Councilman Uchea?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that's unanimous. We're going to table 4.1 and wait for Councilor Lubo to be here for that. So, item five, which is public petitions, communications, or public participation. Any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. So if anyone in the public, because there's no one online that I don't, I would like to speak. Feel free to come forward to the table and state your name and address. And again, it's a two-minute on any subjects within the town. Being the, have no color items, so 7A or reports of committees' responsibilities of the council. Councilman Murray, are there any updates from this point?
The closeout process has begun. So. At the advice of Bender and with the acceptance of the school. Two monitors that were holding up the closeout. The ordering of those months have been canceled since it doesn't work. Holding up the whole project over two monitors. And the school seemed to be okay with that. The building committee hasn't met. But if we need to, in order to put anything on the record about closing out the project, we of course will. But we are, we've started the process of closing out the project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Has the Board of Education voted on it yet?
No, and I don't even think it's been added to a board agenda. We need to make sure that all the invoices are paid for. I think there's a bunch of stuff that we have to do kind of administratively. And we don't want to get caught with something not qualifying for reimbursement because we accidentally see what's wrong.
Okay.
No other reasons for 7A then. 7B report of town council liaisons. I'm gonna start with Katie again. Councilman Murray?
I was not able to attend last week's Agriculture Commission meeting due to work conflict. I haven't seen the minutes come out yet, so I don't even have an update for that.
Okay, no worries. Councilor Con, any updates from any boards or commissions you attended?
TDC and the. Not much, they were the short meeting, right?
Yeah.
And then you updated them about town council, whatever they.
Yeah.
There's much.
Okay. I've had no meetings, but our, the next Conservation Commission meeting is the 12th. I believe there's Paul Kill sign installation updates and they're going to be continuing their forestry management discussions. And actually at their last meeting, I did attend, they had a pretty thorough presentation on forestry management. And it sounded like they're leaning towards Parsiac as their first site to begin forestry work. And begin selective harvesting to take out the dead and dying ash trees and all that stuff. They saw that as the highest potential value site to both clear and make better biodiversity as well as start building up those funds that were intended from the project. That'd be discussed something back in January, February. So. That is it for me. Councilman Uchea?
I missed PCC meeting. I was otherwise engaged. But I have followed up, read the meetings, and there's a lot of discussion going on right now regarding the stuff that's coming up for the parade. The possibility of doing the home decorating. And a couple of the things that are kind of floating around right now, they're trying to lock it down. And some of it may require some of us, but as I find out, I will let you know. But otherwise. How was it?
That's actually a good point to note. It's been several years. But traditionally, the council does all walk together because it group, I think, the town manager, the interim town manager for the parade. So it might be good if counselors are available that morning. I'd be traveling a little bit, but I promise to come back for the parade. So if anyone wants to walk with me and they're available Sunday. You know, it's, well, we can take it offline, but it'd be good to have us all back together since you'll be the first in-person. Alright. So we have on to new, actually, oh, Councilman Utechak, I almost forgot.
That's okay. So the Mental Health Task Force met last Monday, May 2nd. They're looking for a public input on mental health amongst our LGBTQIA+ community. And then we also went over the results from the subcommittee data team. And the task force is discussing possibly hiring an organization to work. Helping do a community survey or needs assessment. But I guess it might cost between $5,000 and $20,000. And I think they're looking into Yukon possibly doing that or getting a quote from them. And then the Rec Advisory Committee met last night. Bruce went over program updates, preschool enrollment is going up for next year. The half-day summer camps are taking off. And I wish Lou was here because Bruce brought up that he met with Lisa Hancock and Karen Maynard, is it? From the Veterans Recognition Committee, they're in the early stages of finding a memorial site to put bricks, engraved bricks. If I understood that right, Lisa. But they're in the very early stages and seem like the Rec Advisory Task Force supports that idea. And I think they talked about a lot last night. And Bruce met with Dave Garrett to discuss the field drainage issues over at Cross Farms, I believe at Public Works. And then lastly, the Memorial Bench and Tree Program is going well, but unfortunately, those costs are going up. So I think that's all I have from those two committees.
A second, and perfect timing. Councilor Lou was walking in right when you mentioned their names, so he's with us now. So with that, Councilor Lou, if you, or if, once you're settled, if you have any updates or reports of liaisons?
Certainly, as far as the PCC that they did meet last night, unfortunately, I was unable to attend the meeting. Also, I refer to the minutes as far as what occurred. I apologize, just two things came up, so I was not able to attend. As far as the BRC that we, that there had been exchanges back and forth regarding various things that I mentioned in the last meeting. That there is a car show that we will have a stand-up for at the, I believe it's over the Historical Society or with the Military Museum on the 21st, or yes, 21st, yes. Saturday or Sunday. And I'll have to clarify that, but then we have been in discussions with the location for the Prevention Memorial. And there's actually some been some very fruitful discussions as far as some of the areas that were identified. So that's ongoing, that I'm still catching up emails that have been exchanged because it was fast and furious over the past three or four days. So. And that's all I have to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lubo. So this law actually bring us back. Lisa P. we're going back up to 4.1. We waited for you, Councilor Lou, to be here to discuss the proclamation recognizing Angela Lubo for the 2022 Nightingale Award for Excellence in Nursing. So because of the new requests that Councilor Lubo has made. We have to have a vote to draft and then it'll be presented at our next meeting. And Councilor Lubo plans to have it printed out and presented at. I forget, what is the name of the event?
Well, it's the Nightingale Award. It's a personal event that they're.
Okay, so. That I would entertain a motion to approve the final drafting and printing of the proclamation as outlined in 4.1. Is there, alright, any further discussion? Alright.
No, this is lovely to do, I think.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing this up.
Of course. I mean, just to give you a little background on it, the Nightingale is, I mean, it's the highest award they can achieve. And it's something that really came up and she doesn't even know I'm doing this, so if she, hopefully she's not blocking it. But I appreciate the council considering this. It is very, you're very fortunate. And I think it's because of some great leadership that she has in her group as well as dedication. So I appreciate the council's consideration.
Thank you, Councilor Lubo. So with that, we'll do a roll call vote.
Are you calling on me? Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes.
Councilor Con? Councilman Uchea?
Ah, yeah. Yeah.
Councilor Lubo?
Abstention.
And I'm an aye, so that is. Five ayes, one abstention. That passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So with that, we are moving back to item 8.1, which is the consideration of a resolution approving an application to the State Historic Preservation Office, known as SHPO, a division of Department of Economic and Community Development for a grant funding of the Old Town Holland County Jail and Museum. Lisa, if you want to write this?
Sure. Back in March, I think it was Councilor Nino who brought up some concerns about the old jail and Kathy Bach. Wanting certain things addressed for safety reasons. And so a team went out there, Leslie. She's our grants, project administrator. And Scott Lappin, the building inspector, the whole team went out to look at the facility. And found out that there was much more involved than we thought it would be to repair things. So what we're going for is to apply for a grant. To, to get an architect to do the drawings that would be required in order to get this taken care of. The, we also have applied for a grant Congressman Courtney. And we're hoping that that has been pushed forward. We're hoping that it'll make it through the Appropriations Committee. So with that said, this will help us provide the funds for the architect to try to get the design work done. And I'm going to turn it over to Leslie because she's much more involved in putting it on.
Good evening, Council.
Thank you.
Oh, of course, I'm happy to be here. It's a pleasure to meet you all in person.
We're not the Brady Bunch tonight.
No.
Actual people.
So I'm here to entertain any questions. I thank you, Lisa, for teeing that off for us. So basically, the request tonight is that you allow the town staff to pursue obtaining, or at least submitting an application to the State Historic Preservation Office for $20,000, non-matched funds. It's one of the few things left. There are some requirements, of course, with that kind of funding that will have to, you know, have competitive bidding, will have to be a qualified architect. It is reimbursable grant, meaning that we'll have to expend it and then get it returned to us. And then we can't start any work on it until we actually have a contract in place with SHPO. So SHPO's next meeting is, if we can get it in this month, they will meet June 3rd. There's no guarantee though, because there's been a backlog of applications that it will be heard. So in talking with SHPO, they expressed that if we could get it in, the latest it would be heard would be July. So we want to try, my goal would be, our goal would be to try and get it in as quickly as possible. And that it will be heard sooner than later. And we're soliciting for qualified architects to begin the remediation work at least to be done.
Great. So one quick question, is the $20,000, what we applied for, Lisa, through Courtney's office? Is that $20,000 inclusive of that cost as well? So if we were to get funding back and we were also awarded through the appropriations, would that be offset? And we won't, we'd accept less from the federal government? Or would we adjust the budget for any potential over, overtures?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, both. We did apply, we applied for much more scope of work with the larger grant. And the quick turnaround time, as you know. And we responded and we said, if we're going to take a swing, let's hit it big. And we did. So the architectural costs are included in there. What happens often is there's, if we're awarded, then there'll be a notice of award that the town will get. And then we'll get eventually a financial assistance proposal from them. And we will just, there's some dancing, there's some back and forth that will go. We may have, they may not award us everything we put in, so it may be a much smaller amount. But we'll back those things out. And, and adjust our budgets and the financial assistance agreement will be reflective of those changes.
Great. That's a few questions for now. So open the floor to any questions from counselors. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolutions outlined in 8.1.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Lubo? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we're going to do a roll call vote again.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Uchea?
Aye.
Councilor Lubo?
Aye.
I'm unanimous. Go forth, get grants, good luck. Thank you.
Of course.
Alright, that brings us now to 8.1. This is a consideration, approving the temporary, negotiate an agreement with the Miracle League of Northern Connecticut. Have a couple newer reports with us tonight. Questions for that? We can reach out to them. I'll be, I apologize.
Roger, just great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Lisa, do you want to give a quick summary?
Back on May 1st, very intensive meeting regarding, including all the stakeholders for the Miracle Field. And I know you took a straw poll vote on a location. And now we're at the point where we need to move forward to actually firm up that. That's what you will be doing as well. The timeline for how you want to get things moving as well as giving me the authority to move forward to negotiate an agreement, which of course would include input from all of the town council members and the Miracle League. And to get to one solid resolution on that, any agreement. And I know the agreement, you wanted to include very specific things. So we will chat about those things and work from there.
Thank you, Lisa. I guess this is my initial comment. I know that Councilor Lubo had brought up. In addition to item, to option five, I think there is going to be some discussions part of our negotiations. I know it seems as though in Birch Grove was the number one area, but there is the discussion that site, I think, just kind of south. Or I can't, I don't know the exact direction, but there's a, there's a pod right near some of the parking that that might have been a potential alternative location. So I know, I think Birch Grove has always been the number one site for the Miracle League. So I guess just from my perspective, that's just initial thoughts is, I would like that to be considered. And if there's any way to have that discussion. I think the other thing was we talked a little about the financing or costs. You know, I know way back when it was brought forward to us, there was a discussion that being, you know, mostly of that entirely being through the fundraising and donations. I know that there might be a site, if it's chosen, negotiations move forward. There might be, need some assistance with clearing a site. And there was discussion at our special meeting about whether or not we could use ARPA funds or non-refund bonding. And I saw, I think I recall Lisa shaking her head at the idea of using any kind of non-refund bonding for that. So I would certainly encourage the ARPA subcommittee if there's any way for us to work with those funds. Those are, if it's needed as a part of negotiations, if not, that's probably even better. But those are just my initial thoughts as we kind of move forward negotiations and. If I have any more, I'll leave it at that. But open the floor to any commentary or questions. Councilman Uchea?
So I'm, I'm kind of wondering how this is going to work, right? Because if we're going to discuss how we, how everything wants to go, it has to be in public. So I'm not quite sure how the negotiations, I'm going to go with Steve mentioned a couple of things that are high on my mind too. I know when the Miracle League first came forward, it was that they were going to pay to have the field put up. And there was intent for it to be at Birch Grove, that there was maybe some cost savings. But by looking at the, the work that the consultant put forward. I think the option that Steve was talking about, kind of south of where the field is now, looks to be the most cost-effective model. And I'm just concerned if we're shifting now to the town paying for this or parts of this. Because that, I think, is a conversation that we've never had. We've never like said that that's how we're going to go. And my only concern with using the ARPA money is what are we using it for as a whole for the town? And I know Colleen and I have looked at a lot of that stuff there to make sure that we're using it for expenses that are one-time expenses that are going to alleviate tax burden from the, from the residents and a future thing. Whereas this is not that. This is something totally different. So I want to make sure we all sit down and talk about what our expectations are of funding for this. Because, you know, we, the Birch Grove, initial Birch Grove site that Miracle Field wanted is almost $1.3 million. So that's a concern for me. I did like the 850,000-ish one that was at Cross Farms.
Which 970, I thought.
No, there was another one.
Site five? You guys have your documents?
I do. 907. 907. Yeah. And then there was, what's the 890 is. That's here, yep. So I think we need to, we need to figure out, and a couple of the things on here, the Miracle League price changes a couple of times on these assessments. So I'm not sure. You know, going through here, it's like 800,000, it's 600,000. So it's like kind of e-bopping around depending on the, the site. I just want to make sure that nothing is a clean to without all of us having the opportunity to really go through it.
But that, certainly that's what we were going to try to do tonight. Or if you need more time, you may have to, but I know that they'd like to try to get things moving if possible. So certainly that would be something we can chat about. Because I think that the first thing before this thing even come to fruition is to make sure that there are sufficient funds with, with the Miracle Group to be able to do it on whatever location you want. Now, on the original location that they proposed, it was between 5,000 and 600,000?
Yeah, we had budgeted at the time $500,000 for the project, right? And when we looked at Birch Grove, the view was because underneath the portals, the surface, we wouldn't have did the work. So that dropped there, where we thought the cost is for, I'm, I'm right, right? So it's like 400, 450. So that's why we pushed on that because the, the site. We ended up deciding wrong time, couldn't do that. So we're still, you know, we huddled last night. So we're still $500,000 we're going to raise. But we also agree, if I think we said last time was, we'd start with 2023, that's going to be a rate rate. Inflation, cost going up, we're going to have to raise to 500, $600,000 is kind of our target. So that's how we kind of went from the Birch Grove to, we're advertising, trying to reach the 500,000 goal. But realistically, we'll probably have to get to 600 by the time we start construction. So.
So it's the delta
Right.
there that I guess there would have to be some sort of decision as to how the council would like to. Push to proceed or certainly.
So I think just kind of going back a little bit, comparable to our negotiations for the study. It was kind of brought forward that we would give you that authority and ability to begin negotiations. And if there's any concerns or anything that need to be brought back to us, it could be sent out and then counselors can individually reach out. I'm not sure if it would be different or not for this, that it should be brought back to the council. I think, in some way, I think it's better to have, you have that authority, but I see you shaking your head. Once we get to a resolution.
Once we get to a point where we try to work out all the details, we get everybody's concerns addressed in an agreement, including a trust fund and all the requirements for replace field replacement, maintenance. Everything that I know that's on your mind, absolutely that I would want to come back for a final blessing from all of you. But in order for me to even begin negotiations, and we know where we're at right now. I need to get a feel as to if there's any sort of monetary commitment on the town side. Or not. And the original proposal that they were posting never included the replacement of fields. So yes, and that would displace other teams if that field did go into that location. There would be a couple of soccer fields, but it wouldn't be to the latitude or whatever, latitude of what is needed for the rest of the groups that are out there. So if depending on where it's located, a lot of the proposals here had, one was $300,000 to relocate the soccer fields and things like that. It could be even more costly depending on where else you may want to relocate those fields. Because when I got the engineer down to where, you know. Where am I going to find a field? What are you recommending for 300,000? And it was just basically over to the side of Birch Grove in that particular proposal. So, and that, that's what's kind of driving the cost on a lot of those things is relocating the fields, which wasn't in their original proposal. And I understand the need to try to.
Although I just wanted to clear, yeah, I think that was, I think that was Councilor Lubo, my, both of us kind of, or colored by the thought. It's not the site, the site one. It's, it was the alternative of it being the wooded area, like, so it would be, it was one that wasn't stuck at all. Wouldn't need to add new fields on top of it. So I think it's a non-stuck-in site, but that was, I think, another area of possible interest. This is the Miracle League.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was one, that was one that the Miracle League, I think, had some interest in as well. That meant that they could still stay with that area of Birch Grove.
So, so I don't know if there's one else besides, sorry, chairman, sorry.
That's good.
I, I, looking at this, it's kind of at the point, I think, for retaining, that the cost for the field, look like they balance across. We should just normalize that, right? Because that's something, I think it's Miracle League, we're going to cover that. That's the field, now all the bleachers, those types. So that's all to me is neutral across all, we should just kind of take that out. Say, to me, it's which of these plans is going to be the cost for the site to get upfront? Because that's what, and I'm going to, like I mentioned last time, I have another site that's ready to go, that I just have to do the field and all set. So I'm trying to keep an equal balance. So the question really is, of those sites, which is going to be the least expensive? And then to be able to come back and say, alright, if we did the one at Cross Farms, number five, we think that cost reasonably is going to be another 200, $300,000. Is that something we can get grants and do something in the town? These others are 700 and we don't. So I think that's where Lisa and I shared a little bit today. I think it really comes down to take the field out, site prep. Which one's least cost, is the town wanting to spend anything on, if not, we should just stop. And we don't really want to have a place, we have to dislocate fields, or we can't afford or don't want to spend. That, that's all.
Yeah, so one of my questions, Lisa, was in the distribution that we got from the consultant. There's like the construction total, then 8% general conditions, 10% design contingency. And then after the construction cost, there's an additional 8% construction contingency. 12% soft costs, which I get, design fees, permitting, that stuff I get. And then 8% FFE, which is furniture, fixtures, and equipment. But like what Mike was just saying, I think the furniture, like the bleachers, the, all that stuff is going to be covered from Miracle Field. So I'm, I'm trying to like, look at this as Mike said, no, and all inclusive here. What are we looking at? What is the total price going to be? And I don't, I guess I don't understand what all three of those, five of those extra additions are after the case.
Yeah.
When, and how much of this work can our employees do, right? That we're not contracting out for it. And as Mike said, we know it pays with a lot of dirt.
Yeah. I really, I really can't commit the staff right now to something like this. Unfortunately, we're down staffed. We're trying to just meet the daily needs as well as just having Birch Grove come back online. There's a lot more maintenance that has to be managed there for the grounds that our, our crews are dealing with. I can ask Scott, but I can almost tell you that he's probably going to say that they may not be able to do it, but I can certainly ask. That they may not be able to do it, but I can certainly ask um. As far as these other fees, this is very common to add in contingencies um for. Design and FFE and all that, that when you're putting a project together, sorry, I'm losing my voice tonight. The these are all part of when you're you're developing and just to make sure you're covering all bases.
I get that part, but my question here is the construction subtotal is just under six hundred thousand dollars and we're saying it's gonna be three hundred thousand dollars. In contingency, that's fifty percent of the cost.
Which which side of you?
Looking at five, you know, it goes from five ninety six, nine twenty.
Twenty five.
To nine hundred and seven. Like that's a three hundred thousand dollar, that's half the cost of the entire project and some kind of contingency that just seems.
These were the things we. It is six hundred thousand, yeah, another three hundred. Construction. You know, the furniture and fixtures, that's that should all be up at the top part of it. It was fifty six, fifty seven thousand there.
Would it be okay if I responded? Uh in my involvement with the building of Birch Grove. Everything costs more than we expected to on the day we. Order everything, right? It's. I would be hesitant to. Not add this kind of cushioning, if you will, into. Boss projections of this project. There are a number of assumptions. That have been stated that are unaccounted for in terms of value, right? Like we don't know what the soil is like underneath. You know, there could be wetlands uh issues that. Are unknown at this point, but as soon as you start. Moving dirt, uh wetlands can very quickly get involved. So. From my experience, I I I understand what you're saying. I don't disagree. Um but with so many costs unknown and knowing what the current economic conditions are for. Really, everything um not. At least anticipating a substantial contingency. Would be, in my opinion. Silly of us. I hope that happens. Yeah, no, no.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Um actually, I I agree a hundred percent with uh with Murray here. We're just going through the construction budget that we have with uh with first row. I was one that was always railing that we didn't have enough due diligence in planning things out and enough. Uh enough of a buffer to really be able to uh to examine things. So. I can't be hypocritical and say, oh, hey, we don't need all that for here, when we we I would say that. We do, whether or not it actually goes at that expense, I think it's something that remains to be seen. Um I think it's something that. You know, as we saw with Birch Grove, where as you're going forward, you'll be able to see some cost savings and certain things. And that you're going actually uh, you know, for this with uh with the good project management on it. Uh wouldn't be spending as much as you would and that we're not, we don't have to worry about certain things. Like the newest equipment for, you know, for various classrooms and other design things and stuff like that that. We already know as far as construction, that this is essentially standardized construction uh through the uh through the miracle field group. And so it's just a matter of some add-ons and things like that, uh depending upon where which field, which area we wanna go. Um that it would uh. That would dictate as far as ultimately there would need to be like later on down the road, additional concessions or additional lights or other things like that. Um that being said, I do have some questions about this because I remember early on when we first started discussing. The uh the miracle field and we started uh talking about it. That there was a discussion of additional funding that the miracle group could get. And I know that you've done the fundraising and I know that uh actually you just had, and I think that was a black tie dinner or one of the dinners that you just had. Um which unfortunately I was hoping to make, but I couldn't this past weekend. So um that um. That there's, I know that there was some grants that you that that there were possibilities or other corporate uh corporate sponsorship. Or other uh other funds that may be available. I'm wondering, is that included in the five hundred thousand dollars that you're looking to raise? Or is this where five hundred thousand as far as like donations and in kind and then looking for larger grants or other things like that beyond that?
Yep, so I I would say inclusive of our five hundred thousand um. Would be once we have a location, like I've talked to a couple people that have grants. I have sponsors that are gonna donate, right? I just need the location. Um I think that is getting to the five hundred now and I'm gonna be fair again, I'm gonna be. Right? I have another spot that I know if I can spend four, five hundred thousand, I can get a field, right? So I don't wanna. Say, okay, yeah, I can go back. If I didn't have any options, I'd probably sit here and say, yeah, let me figure out and get to seven hundred thousand. Let's work. But I also have another option sitting here that I could spend five hundred thousand and have a field. So it's 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 kind of, I'm not answering your question, yeah. Raise more, I'm sure I could go out there and raise for bar up at seven hundred thousand, go get it, but I don't wanna spend seven hundred if I could do the same thing for.
And cause the other question is also then is uh does that five hundred also take into account the trust, the trust fund that we're looking for and everything else and.
Good point, yes. I I talked to Lisa today, we I we talked last night and I, what I told Lisa, what I would do is. Take fifty thousand dollars of what we have and before any construction would start, put fifty thousand into a trust right now. Cause I think it would take. Seven, ten years for the field left replaced and and the numbers I've seen are like one fifty to two hundred based on other towns. But before we would start, we'd put money in a trust, at least put it there, earmark it, figure out how we guarantee, figure that out. But we would at least start that right out the gate, out of that five hundred. That's why we kind of, we probably need to get the six hundred. Based on, we don't have contingency in our five hundred. I feel more confident in the field because we talked to a bunch of other places who built this. It's the underneath the field is the unknown, right? And my construction things from work, you need the contingencies and. Wetlands and parking are the two big things that scare us a little bit over at that site. That's why the other first boat maybe. Cut some trees is probably cheaper than the the other two pieces, but um I feel confident on the actual structure piece because there's it's there's examples out there we can go to.
I think I think you're absolutely right. I mean, the devils are in the details. I mean, there's there's a lot of things where you won't know until you start actually doing the work. So I understand that.
Yeah.
Um uh the reason why I'm asking is, I mean, I think that you can understand this or the conundrum that we're in right here right now. Is where we just went through a budget cycle where we just came back and said. We're looking at reducing certain funding for certain areas. And now to say that we're gonna go back in and. You know, say, okay, we'll commit X number of dollars. It's difficult for us to do it at this point. And I think it's something that. Um you know, we wanna support, we wanna, I mean, you know, I think that all of us here would love to see it here in town. But it's one of those things where as far as for me, coming in and saying, I can guarantee you that we're gonna give X amount of dollars. I I mean, it it's it's difficult. And I know, I mean.
I'm a town resident, so I it's a dilemma for me because I understand, I can't imagine going out there and saying, yeah, we did this and we have to take three hundred thousand out of something else. But it doesn't, it doesn't make sense from a resident standpoint. Our goal was there was a spot we could land in. And so we all started in town because we thought we had a spot that would all work out. That's how it all got started, but. Through the study, it's like there isn't a spot that doesn't displace something else, or there's a spot that needs major construction. That's how this time has happened. So I. Fully appreciate that.
So um, yeah, so I mean, I think that uh again, it's something where if we could possibly look at that other spot by birth grow, I think that's that's something that. You know, again, that one as well as the uh crossfire number five um proposal. I mean, those are, that's those are the two that we uh that we. Read upon, took a straw poll on, I should say, um that I think um, I think that would probably be the best alternative and one that. Uh if we at least get the the cost for that where it's. Uh I mean, looking at it and knowing what what occurred with uh with with Birch Grove and where it's located. I'm hoping that it wouldn't be as substantial as far as for all the leveling and everything else. Or um one other thing I'd like to know as well is that if, like we discussed last time. Is if we moved the field up from on crossfarms number five up to where uh the shed is there. That that was one of the proposals that uh. And it was. Yeah. That um that they could, that they would be willing to do that. And if that would sort of alleviate some of the clearing costs. And some of the leveling costs, which I think that they said is much more level as you're not looking at building up a fourteen foot berm. Um there, so that's one of the things that I would ask that that be done. Um again, I'm hesitant. About agreeing to any type of monetary discussions or agreements um until we actually get that information. I know that. Doesn't help you um because I know you wanna get moving and you wanna have something solid and I can understand that. I can appreciate you guys have been waiting. For over a year now, uh or not, if not longer, for us to get moving on this, but it's something that, you know, again. Our due diligence, I need to, you know, I I pressed on that before with Birch Grove. I need to press forward on this as well.
So 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 I'm fine, you know, we talk, I think, right? Goal end of May, so I talked to Lisa that I think, I think it's gonna get to a point where you can get approximation and I don't know where the line is, right? Is it zero? I think if it's zero, then we're gonna fuck. Like if you're cutting trees, it's gonna get cost in there. Um but the question is, is there a window in here to say, this makes sense to do in town and keep in town? And like I said, we we. Love both of those sites, but we should probably pretty quickly come around. Okay, if you look at the site, it's still gonna be hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. To get the site prepped. Is that not palatable? Let's just call it.
Was there, is there a sawmill in the area?
We talked to Lisa, we're good to make any final decisions to the end of May, knowing we can kick through. All I ask is if we get to a point, it just does not make sense. This is all, make a decision.
Yeah.
Um and then we can kind of move forward.
So I definitely want miracle field here. I think it belongs in Talend. Um I just, I guess I'm unclear on. What the um responsibility, if the council goes along, what the responsibility is as far as. Helping pay some of the costs. Is it? I don't know, someone said three hundred thousand. Is it more than that? Do we have any idea what we would have to help with the amount?
So that I think we. Information yet, the three hundred thousand was a reference to. I think we were in your discussion. Site one and there. Thousand to create yields. That range of thousand is a clear number. Here, that might be a difference. Sorry to clarify.
You're breaking up pretty bad. Um so you're like in and out, Steve, so you, I heard you say three hundred thousand, but then. You kind of cut out, so. Can I repeat what you said?
It was the additional cost for five was like thousand over. They were currently. Is that correct?
Think about it. In that additional. So site five, all the additional work. Ready to start the deal is extra cost.
Yeah, it still broke up a little bit, but I get it. It's gonna be a lot of money. I know Tammy mentioned the one time, like the art money is one time. Um use, which is true, but some of these things I would think is just a one time use if we'd use it for either. Field or parking, if we're talking about crossfarms. I know um Birch Grove was the number one pick and. Um I don't wanna continue to delay this. Like Mike said, if we just don't wanna do it, we should just tell them that tonight and not string along. I mean, I know they've got other offers, other places. So um I guess it's kind of like when we do all these grant things, why don't we just do something? And see what happens the next week when Lisa gets back to us. I don't know. I think. As a council, we can do better for um. A disability members of the community and surrounding communities.
Thank you, Councilman. You kind of actually kind of leaned into a little bit of what the question I was gonna ask and knowing that Leslie's in the room. I think we talked about Steve grants and I know we were gonna, I wanna keep piling more grant opportunities, but would there be? Any viable grants or at state or federal level outside of, I think, the Courtney Grant, which we did before with the miracle field, there did get moved to the next level. Would there be any opportunities for Steve or something else that could be? Considered for this project that could be a part of our negotiations is applying for grants that could help offset certain costs.
I'm not aware of any um funding opportunities. Uh that are immediate. Uh Steve is not something I'm familiar with because I'm not formerly from small town.
Yeah.
So Steve is, although I've heard of it, I'm not, I'm not sure. I think that's gonna be funded this year. I think it is. I'm not sure. Certainly can check into that. I I would just remind the council. That uh anytime that we uh engage in fund seeking that involves the state or federal. There's often many complications. We can't begin work before we have contracts in place. We have to do federal. Uh wage, you know, so it often drives up the cost of a project. So it's not that there aren't opportunities. Um I'm not thinking of any off the top of my head, especially when there's no match required. That's a few and parvating thing. Um what's coming to mind is just partnerships uh with. Civic organizations like the miracle league and Hartford Foundation for public giving and things. I don't, and I don't mean to. I I think if the council decides or any council decides to move forward, there must be a partnership. Uh and I think the town in taking on responsibility of finding a location. And ultimately the maintenance of that location and that that's a, that's a long term consideration. That the council is anywhere will have to address and be mindful of. So we can get the bat and the batter up. We think, but but there's costs associated down the line that I would just remind the council that. We can get the field built maybe through partnerships and grants and cobble cobbling funding together. But be mindful that it's not just the initial splash. There's a long term financial implication. Uh to our residents and to our taxpayers and to our other civic organizations.
Yeah.
That are wonderfully equipped to do great things as well. No disrespect at all intended to fantastic project.
No, 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 it's perfectly fine. I think that was something that was already referenced too. I think the idea of a trust or sinking fund that would be. Regularly through annual fundraising would help be built up for the maintenance costs that is covered by the town as well as replacement costs, I think, like you said, was.
Yeah, we have expectations. If you look at a lot of the other miracle field organizations, there are ongoing operation cost they fund.
Yeah.
Right? So I think it's like our partnership with the league, I I fully intend for the field, we'd be doing things. For outside players, some other towns coming in, so there'd be fees coming together. So expectation, there would be funds that we would contribute to the field.
The other counselors that have cancer.
Yeah. There's only one question is that. Right now. All the teams are. Uh all the teams are hanging right now, right? All the teams are active.
Yep.
Even though soccer and soccer too. With Dave. He got about what, two teams or three teams?
I'm not sure.
Dave soccer?
No, there's like three hundred kids.
Yeah.
There's a lot worse.
He's active. His his all the team's active, that's what I'm saying. And uh he's been spread out like uh. I think two fields.
No.
He's doing, how many fields he's using? I know. My assumption is like if we, if we, if we propose. I don't know. It's like I said, this is the first time I went out there today. This uh farm and automatic adventure, everything else in there, Bushgrove. And I just walked around and it's like. What I'm looking for, but it's like at the field and uh. Cross mom, they are vastic field. There's auto automatic venture and even though if you go in afternoon at eleven o'clock, there's too many moms and kids and everything and they have, the kids are playing well. My purpose is saying that there's no parking, all the parking are solid. And if there's a game on the weekend or whatever it is, there is no parking whatsoever. And if there's a semester game, so means you forget about it. The only thing is like if uh David, Dave, I'm sorry, he got. He's active with all the, all of his teams on different fields. And the bush grove is like now is empty. So if we use that field or the miracle field. And I think uh we don't have to, I don't know, I'm just saying that we don't have to. And I think, uh, we don't have to, I don't know. I'm just saying that we don't have to.
That was the original request and what happened was there was several concerns from the community. Being losing the ability to have those two fields.
Actually, there's more than two fields.
Right, but they were going to replace two.
Yeah, once, and also the Miracle Field design is a outfield that can be used as a.
So we'd only displace one? The size of the fields and all that. Um, but, excuse me. So the concern was that. The soccer league lacrosse would be displaced and not be able to use. The fields any longer because they would no longer be there once this new field came in, except for the smaller ones. That are part of the design. That was the original understanding. So when that came about, the concern was to try to determine can we put them somewhere else? Where we're not displacing anybody or. If we have to displace those fields, where could we put those other fields? So that was the intention of this study. To try to see what we could do. In the long term.
I think it's, uh. Bushgrove is like if we, if you push it back. Maybe more push it back and I think there would be. More suitable for everybody and then try to make more rooms and everything is there. Even though it, two teams are playing, even though we have the pocket. Back in the day, all the compliance are there, but it's like, uh, we just have to push it. And I think that's the cheapest way. For us. And it makes sense to me that, uh. Instead of getting a hundred, cutting a hundred trees, you can cut fifty and then just push it out and.
Which, which look are you talking about Dave Garrett's? Original look, uh, that he has recommended location because there, there's, there were several different proposals for Birch Grove. One was the one that they originally.
I'm talking about the original proposal.
The original proposal didn't have any trees.
Um, that's what I'm saying that I like. Use the original proposal and just push it back.
If you do that, though, you have to put new soccer fields in someplace else for the.
No, we, um, is gonna be, they're gonna, going, going to be a combine as what man understood.
That's not.
Yeah, so there, where the fields were, I don't think it would come back equal to what it is. So there would be reductions on fields. The Miracle Field won't go in, there'll be a soccer field in the outfield. Think the side of it is not the same of what's there today. So there, there's some takeaway. So I will put that up. There's some takeaway of soccer. Fields that are in existence. That was, uh, Dave pushing back, saying we need to replace.
And I think the proposal that included. What was that? One point two million, I think, was it, uh, study three. That included, is one that included three hundred thousand.
I believe Dave pushed back and that cost to.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's in the meeting packet for the minutes that we published or they haven't already published.
Four hundred.
That, that, yeah, like they kind of said, well, this is probably what's actually going to cost for us to do this or it's what's going to cost a town, especially with inflation. I think there was some cost in it.
Well, that, that was one of the things I asked our engineer about. I said, where, where are you going to get two fields for three hundred thousand? And he felt that the only way you'd get it for that sort of price was a location right on the Birch Field grounds. Which is further back.
Where the other baseball, he wanted to put the baseball field like back behind the.
And maybe, maybe put it out there and that would be more along the lines of three hundred thousand for those fields to go there. Um, but that was, he said, if you tried to put soccer fields somewhere else, it was going to be much more costly. Than that particular location.
Yeah, I think that's at least where we kind of got with that special meeting that. We want this to be an additive to some extent and to minimize any impact of the leagues.
I mean, the other, the other thought is, you know, we'll certainly look at Dave Garrett's proposal and probably need to get. A little more information about it.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, I think one of the, the original, one of the proposals he had was to. The Miracle Field further back also, and then it wouldn't displace any fields. At the Birch Grove primary site, but then again, you're not going to have the base.
And always remember, hold on, you're not displacing.
I was having to debate the council, cause that was displacement. The, the, that's why we had to have all these meetings with the league. So they said, no, you are displacing. And we're trying to create this little headbutting between any, everyone, all kind of work together and. And kind of come to a conclusion that allows us to ultimately bring the Miracle Field to town. Negatively impacting or stepping on anyone's toes through the process. And I guess just, I'm gonna want to get back a little bit more for the thing to for a question about process wise. So I know you, you've kind of referenced the location, you don't have to ask that, but in terms of timelines. Once we were big in negotiations, if we were to come back and have an agreement that the council could move forward with. You know, what is the perspective timeline for this for building? Because I know, I think there seems to be a lot of projects that are being delayed for inflation costs. And there were some issues even with Birch Grove in terms of raw materials through the pandemic that. Things may have, even though it was done on time and on budget, you know, there's probably concerns that things didn't get done in the phases they were expected to. And I just wonder if you're expecting, you know, if we were to go through an agreement, would you say, well, let's give ourselves an extra six months to do additional fundraises? That, that sort.
I think, I think Todd mentioned this last time, so he's, he's kind of the construction guy. I think we were trying to. Like next year. So we felt based on our trajectory right now, and then once we have a location that we could get to the. I don't think I need five hundred thousand to start construction, but like we're at two hundred now. So I think, you know, if we, once we have a location, we'll build, bump that up pretty quick. So I think, I think what Todd was looking at is next.
Okay. Yeah, because I think you also said, I don't name any names too, but I think I've heard that from one of our previous discussions that. A lot of the grants or donors that were lined up were kind of like matching six figure donors. There's.
Some big numbers.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's, I said, so the timing is really twenty twenty. That's, that's kind of our planning timeline right now.
Okay. All right, hold on to a second. Another question, I think Counselor Bubba, I think Counselor Murray.
Go ahead, you go.
Sure. Um, I just wanted to. Add some considerations. We, to, for you, Lisa. Cause it's already pretty complicated, right? So. I think part of the reason as, um, our chairman just said. That we've had so many meetings about this is to sort of make sure everything gets covered.
Mm-hmm.
And so I appreciate you getting us all these details. Um, I look forward to you. Coming up with a proposal that we can consider later this month. Um, one of the items that was brought up that I, I just want to make sure is reinforced is about parking. Um, and, you know, we know that parking at crossfarms is a little.
Period.
Yeah, there's a lot of cars. Uh, so adding a field, I think, uh, in which we hope to be active, you know. We know we'd have to dedicate some additional, uh, accessible parking spaces, but even. Uh, parking spaces just for others who might be joining, you know, attending an additional field event. Is something that the soccer club certainly was very clear about. And I think, um, that if we're going to start talking about, you're going to start talking about using crossfarms. The issue of parking. Yeah, and I, I know that from this report that that was certainly mentioned as well. I just worry that it brings. An additional cost to a project that already has things piling up on it. Uh, not that. I think that there possibly is adequate parking already in existence at Birch Grove. Uh, due to the additional parking that was put in with the, with the new school project. But I, I don't know because I'm not a parking expert. Thank goodness. No, no, I'm good without that. Yeah, so, um. I, I do hope that as part of the consideration for the project, that parking is something that is. Uh, is, is brought into the discussions. I also know that when Counselor Bubba and I had an initial reaction last week. To the location south of. The existing field at the Birch Grove site. Um, we, we, we did bring up, both of us brought up concerns about, um, the neighbors. I think that now that I've driven by it a number of times. I think that the area we're talking about is actually in front of a whole different neighbor.
Right.
Uh, so for good or bad. Maybe, maybe not. I know that that particular neighbor is set back from the road more than the other neighbor, so maybe that's good. Uh, but I, I think, um, again, part of Counselor Luba's due diligence efforts. That we may need to be reaching out to some of our neighbors of, of that particular site. As a courtesy. Um, and, and part of our due diligence. I also do believe that. When the Miracle Field people came to us, the intention was that there wouldn't be any costs for the town. And I think that they saw an opportunity, uh, for both Tallinn and for the Miracle League. And it's so exciting what they brought to us. Uh, like so many other things. Uh, now that we can, we've considered this opportunity from a number of different perspectives. We know that more needs to be done than the original proposal. And I think that, that happens a lot. Um, so I don't, I don't think there's anybody getting anything wrong here. I don't think there's a bait and switch going on. I just think we're at that point where we need to, as a town, figure out. Where's the best location for us for Miracle Field? What are the costs? How are they going to be covered and paid? And then make a decision, you know, kind of up or down to root ball. So that's my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I agree. Uh, I mean, it's scary. Katie and I are agreeing a hundred percent. I had a lot of things today. But, um, that, uh. But, um, that I, I would agree. I think that one thing that we need to do is that we need to examine that, that Birch Grove area a little bit more thoroughly. Um, I know that that's something that came up the last time and I know it's gonna be delaying this, this possibly a little bit more, but I think it's something that. Uh, I'd like to see it as far as a possible, uh, uh, possible field. Where, uh, and see what the actual costs are. Uh, because looking at it from, uh, comparing it as we're going back and forth between the, uh, different plans. It looks like there wouldn't be quite as much clearing that would need to be done. That it, again, it has the parking that we were looking for. It has the facilities that would be conducive to what, uh, Miracle Field would be looking for. And, um, I'm still, that being said, I'm still hesitant as always about uncovering, uh, BOE property. Um, because that would be BOE property and that, that's something that I know that was a concern of theirs. Um, is would they be the ones that would be responsible for that? Uh, and if it's something that we would need to like in some way either cut off BOE and make it town property or how we. You know, uh, if there's some type of transaction, but that's putting the cart way before the horse. I think that the first thing we need to do is, I'd like to see. Uh, I'd like to empower Ms. Hancock to go forward with having that study. Having that, you know, uh, similar to what we've had done here. And then once we get that amount, is to, uh, is to look to negotiate, uh, as far as what the prices would be and. How much would be expected of the town and then come back to us on it, um, as far as. The amount that, uh, the miracle group is, is willing to put forward. Knowing that it's going to be at that location in comparison to what, uh, what some of the other proposals are. And then, then after we find out that, uh, find out the actual amount. Or that we could then, I think, have a more proof of discussion as far as saying, we'd be willing to do this, we would be, uh, or this is just too much. And, uh, I think it's something that we could, within the next meeting or two, be able to pretty much resolve once we get those numbers. Because I think that we have a meeting in the minds amongst us. It's just a matter of getting now the, down to the brass tacks. And seeing, okay, what's the actual bottom line number going to be? And what's the realistic amount that we can ask you to raise and vice versa. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
So, um, my, my only. I want to definitely understand the other Birch Grove site. My only concern with the other Birch Grove site, like I said to Mike, is it does not have. Because the school's not necessarily going to be open on weekends for bathrooms and all of that. And that's a concern of mine for people with disabilities, wheelchairs, et cetera. Having access to facility. Um, and I just want to make sure if we go ahead and move forward with something like that, we're looking at X amount of years before we're talking about. Putting in some sort of freestanding facilities outside where crossfarms does not already have. That being said, um, I'd like to understand the impact of that one there. And I just couldn't concern with the neighbors. You guys usually, you guys aren't having some raging night games, are you? You know, that's my thing. Like I think. You know, if we have a tree buffer there with the neighbors, you know, it's like the high school, yeah, we have football games at Friday nights. You know, we have some soccer games that are nights and lights and stuff like that, but I.
I don't think there's like so.
Yeah, I don't think Challenger is going to be putting on some like floodlight raging like best baseball games like. So at least not in, um, you know, our foreseeable future. So I'm thinking that it would be pretty unobtrusive. To the neighbors because we're not gonna have people parking on the road, right? We're, you know, parking the school and then going. Thank. Yeah, yeah, but so I don't think that one is hopefully as much of an issue. Um, because I believe like a lot of the issues that we had with Birch Grove was around the, the lighting at the school, the flood lighting, going into people's yards and stuff like that, right? So.
It was more, but yeah.
But that was a big one, but I know I've heard about a lot of those, the lighting. So, um, I'm hoping that maybe we find neighbors would be a little more. Okay, with the, in that secondary Birch Grove site if possible.
If, um. Well, once I get. Dave Garrett's proposal reviewed.
Did you need that again, Lisa?
You know, I can't speak.
Again? No, I know.
Once, once I get Dave Garrett's proposal reviewed with our engineer and Mike Byham. To try to see what goes from there. Um, I can reach out to the neighbors if that's something the town council agrees on. To give them an idea of what the proposal is, if, if that's where we're headed. Uh, but it's gonna have to happen very quickly. As far as facilities, I think you were amenable to having the handicap porta potties. Rather, and that would be an expensive. The miracle group. So I don't think we need to look at adding facilities out there. And that be accessible with, they do have the handicap ones that cost almost twice as much, but.
Yeah, that was what. It was, or Mr. Griffin, I think I mentioned that, you know, they pay for the fees to the recreation department that like the ADA accessible for double. Annual usage, so.
Well, I only bring that up because I know when we went to East Line, that's what they were saying, you know, like they had the field. And their next phase was, you know, making sure they had full facilities, you know, water, bathrooms and all of that for people with needs. So I just want that to kind of, if that's gonna be something we're thinking about. Three, four years down the road, then that's an impact, right? You have that at crossfarms. You don't have that at the school.
And is that something that may have been a concern?
If it was there, it'd get a check plus.
Right.
Otherwise, everything we've used and the place we're looking at would be four bucks, right? So it's, it's a plus.
Right.
Cause we do have facilities as part of our decision-making criteria. So if there isn't a plus.
There, there is the water run that ran to the modulars is capped under that field. Um, so it's, it's not. It's not the same, right? But it, there is some accessibility. Uh, the issue of the septic tank on that site is what I would be most concerned about. But there is electricity capped under the field as well as water.
Just wondering, that's just a major cost, which I think to keep in the back of your mind if that's what anybody is thinking about. You're, you're a major investor for something like that.
I'd say if anything, I think, I mean, that's certainly a high priority, but I think, uh, from our last discussion, another phase or consideration was Kevin's court. Especially in that, that area that can be used by Birch Grove or by, but I know. Uh, but with that, are there any, is there any other discussion before we move to the resolution? All right, seeing none, I would just hear a motion to approve the resolutions outlined in eight points.
Second.
If I counsel Luba. We'll do the roll call.
Aye.
Very.
Aye.
That's Mucio. Hi, and I'm an ice lady. Lisa, negotiate. I'll bring.
I'm kidding. Is it you that I will be working through? Okay, we'll try to get together rather quickly to get things moving.
No, absolutely.
Okay.
You have my number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, there's eight point three appointments, vacancies on various missile boards and conditions. We don't have any, but I just want to bring to the light that there was rectified regarding the email addresses, the vacancies email will be, still be the like indeed dot org. So I think it was updated, was it? But that was in the email chain that there was no doctor.
Well, the, I'm not sure what happened because anything that's dot org should automatically get moved to that. Reason that link was not working for that particular one. If you sent it to dot org, it went.
Okay.
But if you sent it to the talonct.gov.
Because that's what I initially tried when I was passing along, you know, like I've this morning. So I just want to make sure it does go to the person. Just bring it up. It has been applying. If they use that dot, kick that, that email is working now. So that's just the one plug is that is the new email and should be working now. But seeing no appointments, uh, there's also no old business. So I intend to report the contemporary town manager.
Okay, couple of things, um, just so you're aware. This Thursday I will be out of the office. I'll be available in the morning through emails, things like that. But I will not be in the office. And then the following Thursday, which is your town manager process, whenever I will, I won't be here that day as well. Um, because I will be at a government finance officer's meeting that day. So just to give you a heads up, I will be in the building those two days. Also, I'm, I think you've all received a copy of the referendum flyer that I'm trying to get out every which way possible. Certainly if there's, um, any that, any of you want to take and share in businesses or whatever, I, up to you. But I did send out a copy of the flyer to each of you. And we will have them available here in, in all the municipal buildings, the town clerk, library, so forth. There will be a posting at the polls with the information as well. So I'm glad we were able to do that. In addition, I'm working on a communication to go out to the public and I appreciate everyone's input that I've received so far. I sent out a copy of that today, the email, and I also have hard copies here tonight. But I'd appreciate if, um, each of you could try to look at it tonight and get back to me if there's any concerns with anything I have in there. I'd, I'd like to have one document that's blessed by all of you. That to make sure that you're all in agreement with it, because I don't want it to go out with somebody agreeing with something in the language. So I'd like to say that it's been, you know, it's supported by the town council. So if you could possibly get back to me by tomorrow morning, I'd appreciate it because I want to get the information out there to the public as quickly as possible. Um, another thing that I'm going to try to work on is to get a, like a budget summary, uh, just an overall. Or just summary, if I can get to that. I'm juggling a lot of things right now, but I will certainly try to get that out there as well. But a lot of the information is still online for a lot of detail of what's in the budget. And this document just kind of highlights the reductions that are happening. And I think that's all. Do you have any questions on anything?
All right, uh, Councilman, you can check your hands up.
Sorry about that. I have a sick daughter and I'm sick. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. So, um, Lisa, I appreciate that there's going to be something at the polls. Can we make that flyer huge so people see it when they walk in? Because I know if I walked in and done the wall, I would never even acknowledge it there. So I'm not sure if that's something.
I will see what we can do for like, uh, like a like a poster size. That was my. I was going to try to see if we can do that. So if all possible.
Thank you.
Check any other questions or comments from councilors? Seeing there's item eleven adoption of the minutes. Your motion to approve the minutes of that. And eleven point one and eleven point two. Counselor Luba, Secretary Murray. Although, Counsel.
Jack.
I.
Counselor Mucio.
Aye.
Counselor Luba.
Aye.
I'm an ice lady unanimous. Correspondence to council.
We had one hundred and five email communications since, um, March twenty seventh. Through today, uh, ninety-eight of those were regarding the budget. Uh, there was one regarding absentee ballot, two regarding Miracle Field, one regarding solar energy backup for emergency services, one regarding the town manager search, and two regarding boards and committees.
Thank you, Counselor Murray. So that's item thirteen, Chairperson's report. I think as we alluded to, we have our second referendum next week, so everybody gets out and votes. Chairperson's hour for this Thursday unfortunately is canceled, so we reschedule for June if there's a conflicting uh, meeting that I could be at at six thirty. So I, I communicated that to Megan, so that cancellation should come out. And then there's a little bit of commentary online, and I just want to apologize for the way that the meetings were lined up last week. I think when Counselor Rachel Regan and I were negotiating and lined up, we thought it was enough time and clearly it was not. And also I know they have already left, but also I'd like to accept an apology not only to councilors and the public for not having suitable time, but also then delaying them and making them wait for their meetings to begin. So, you know, I'll certainly work to be better and make sure that when we have special meetings, we provide more equipped time for debate and discussion. So just appreciate everyone's, uh, understanding of why it was set up that way. Those wasn't our intent to limit debate and discussion. So I just want that. With that, item fourteen is communications and petitions from council persons. Counselor Murray?
Yes, I, I know I sent an email about this ahead of time, um, but I think that the council needs to approve any changes to the voting district lines in town to line up with the state legislative districts. And I wanted to thank you, Lisa, for jumping on that right away. I didn't intend for you to, to jump on it right away. I just didn't want to surprise you tonight. Uh, but I think per our charter that, um, the required changes need to be approved by us. So hopefully that sounds like that's in the works.
Is coming forthcoming. Great.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just glad I know at least one of the registrants responded and I think they're on top of it as well. So they're all working towards it and they'll get back to us for a date that would be suitable or required by their charter or state statutes of adjusting those adjustments. Counselor Mucio.
I wasn't going to have anything, but you just brought up absentee ballots. And I just want to, I've had, I've had more than a handful of people ask me about the ballot process and the way that it's listed online is a little confusing. So if somebody wants a ballot, an absentee ballot, they actually have to go to town hall, pick up the application, fill it out then, and then get the ballot right then, fill it out and drop it off.
That is correct.
But they're not available yet, right? Like they don't have.
They were waiting for the minutes to come out and they have to be made up and printed. So they're in the process of doing that. We're hoping by the twelfth. Um, but anybody who has, um, yeah, today's the tenth. I just had to make sure today. Um, you, you know, we've asked people, especially if they're disabled or whatever, to call first to make sure that we have them. But we've been trying to communicate through electronic messaging and, and everything else as well as it looks like. But if it's con- confusing, if you want to just send me, I mean, I could take another look at it. But was there anything specific that you want to point out?
I think it's just that people understand that they have to come in, get the ballot, fill it out. Sorry, get the application, fill it out, get the ballot, fill it out, leave it. And I'm just a little concerned because it's the twelfth. You guys aren't open on Friday, Saturday or Sunday. That means we have basically Monday for anybody who wants a ballot to come in, get a ballot. Get it up, sorry, commit, get an application, plug the application, get a ballot, fill out the ballot, leave it for the election the next day.
I'll speak with the town clerk tomorrow and see what we can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Unfortunately, it's the turnaround times.
Yeah.
We could not provide sufficient time to get the ballot in the mail, back in the mail. So.
That was, that was it. Just, um, I just think we need to, um, I'm actually putting it in my, my calendar now and that. But yeah, I think it's just comes down to, um, making sure people fully understand how to do that, should they want to, and that they really only have one day to do.
Yeah, because I think even with the past referendum, I think of at least one or two situations where they got it that like Monday and they basically like had to drop it in one of the boxes or they like were requested that they couldn't go in themselves, like leave it at the clerk's office or the appropriate office on Tuesday. Because they couldn't, they didn't want to mail it back and not have it be, you know, actually received in time. So I think there's also probably a, a point of note, if those boxes are still available or if they're not unlocked or usable, I'm assuming they are, that they know that they can still return or deliver their ballot to the clerk's office and then it goes to the distributor or whoever to, to count it, kind of qualify as a, as a vote.
And Lisa, would it be possible for you guys to make sure, like the minute you guys have the ballots, to put something out on EBLAS so if you get them early enough Thursday? People can try to come down on Thursday, should they have a need to get it done then.
We will do that.
Any other communications or petitions? I think seeing none, we'll do one fifteen, which is follow up with participation on a seven or six council with a three minute limit. If you're on Zoom, you can hit the race hand function or hit star nine if you're on the phone, you don't, you're just a public person. So it's entirely up to whoever's online. All right. Going once, going twice. Item sixteen, I've entered in a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-four P M.
So moved.
So my Counselor Luke. Who's in favor?
I can't eat. Steve, it's weird. You break up. Um, if you asked me, I said, I'll say yes. Aye.
I'm an ice lady unanimous. We're adjourned at eight twenty-four P M. Thank you, everyone.